Call meeting to order, roll call.
Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Mr. DeBor?
Here.
Mrs. Argamiter?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Silvis?
Here.
Mr. Vederall?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to give notice of the executive session of August 19, 2024, for personnel from 7:23 p.m. to 7:39 p.m. Public comments regarding the agenda for tonight. The only one I have is Dr. Dixon is going to give a presentation on the Martin Luther King Mentor Program. Go ahead.
Thank you. To Dr. Jennifer Golden, Superintendent of the Crawford Central School District and your administrative team, Mr. Kevin Merritt, President of the Crawford Central School District Board of Director, Directors and Board Members, I greatly appreciate your giving me the opportunity to say thank you for your support of the MLK Mentoring Program, now in its 14th year at the Meadville Area Middle School. This thank you is on behalf of the Meadville Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Board and its partners, Allegheny College and the Crawford Central School District. Before I provide highlights of the program, I want to also send out a special thank you to Principal Jonathan Frye and the faculty and staff of the Meadville Area Middle School for always being 100% plus supportive of the program. This year, we especially thank school board member Mrs. Tammy Silvis for attending our year-end celebration. Our time to report to the community and to Dr. Kelly Tringa and her faculty and staff at the Second District Elementary School for the excellent collaboration in our summer blast program. Thank you, Mrs. Pittner, for assisting me with our PowerPoint that may keep me on track. And now for the highlights of the MLK Mentoring Program. So if you watch the screen, it was founded in 2010 in partnership with Allegheny College, Crawford Central School District, and Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Fund. Our goals are to improve students' academic achievement with emphasis on math, science, and communication, provide homework assistance, increase the students' level of confidence and independence, provide character and community-building activities, maintain connectivity among students, teachers, and parents, and increase parent involvement and promote a beloved community. Our program offerings are back-to-basics, math, science, water shield, communication, yoga, nutrition, and exercise, arts and crafts, ice skating, swimming, workplace skills, and related field trips. Looking at our 2024-2025 school year, it starts October 21st, and it will go until June 4th. We meet Monday through Thursday from 3:30 p.m. until 5:30 p.m. Programming will follow the Crawford Central School District school year calendar. Snacks are provided every day by Crawford Central School District. Transportation is provided by Hubbard Bus Service Incorporated. And we look at performance measures because students have to really gain something from being in the program. So the performance measures are to improve in classroom performance, improve in school attendance, reduction in disciplinary referrals, demonstration of positive educational, social, and behavioral changes. Our staff consists of Dr. Nancy Smith, Program Administrator, U. Stuli Director, Mr. Harrison Dixon III Facilitator, Osvaldo Mesa is our consultant, Skyler Williams is a teacher assistant, Sarah Hoplock is the mentor, Ashley Tipton is also a mentor. We collaborate with the following organizations, and they really provide excellent teachers in our program, which cuts down on the cost of staffing. So they are Accutec Precision Aerospace, Allegheny College, COO 101.7 Crawford County Chamber of Commerce, Meadville Area Recreational Complex, Meadville Medical Center, Meadville Rotary Club, Meadville Salvation Army, Seven Mountain Media, the Meadville Tribune, the Nutrition Group, and Women's Services Incorporated. So what's the impact? You know, the consultant and I decided to look over the 14 years, and we saw that 580-plus students have completed the program. Forty-five percent made honor roll, 12% made high honor roll, 90% participated in service learning, one student owned her own business, and many of these students have now graduated from college and technical school. So we're rather proud of them. And thank you to Superintendent Dr. Jennifer Golden and administrative team, President Kevin Merritt and the school board directors, Allegheny College, Meadville Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Fund, and of course, the principal, Mr. Jonathan Frye, staff and teachers at MAMS, Ms. Tammy Silvis, and Dr. Kelly Tringa. That ends my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Great job.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you again.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes resolved to the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes: the regular board meeting of June 24, 2024; summary of interviews of July 15, 2024; special meeting of July 17, 2024; summary of interviews of August 12, 2024; committee of the whole meeting of August 19, 2024; and the summary of interviews of August 20, 2024. And I need a motion. Ron?
Second.
Monica? Any corrections, questions? Not all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Under personnel, approval to accept the resignations of Holly L. Chapman and Dr. Ryan and M. Pickering. Resolved the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby accepts the resignation of Holly L. Chapman, effective July 31, 2024, and Dr. Ryan and Pickering, effective August 12, 2024. And is there a motion?
I move.
I have Jeff. Was that Ed? Any question, discussion?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Ed.
Who was the first then?
Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to acknowledge them and give them thanks for the time they did commit to the district and wish them well in their new endeavors. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Appointment of new board members resolved to the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Latasha T. Manning and Jason T. Nesbit to fill the vacancies for the Board of School Directors for a term ending December 2025. Is there a motion? I have Ron and Jeff. Questions, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. And at this time, Lisa, you're swearing in.
Yes.
Latasha, or, yeah.
I'm Latasha T. Manning.
I'm Latasha Latasha T. Manning.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm. That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I'm Jason T. Nesbit.
I'm Jason T. Nesbit.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will.
Or affirm that I will.
Support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome to the board. Either of you two have anything to say before we move on? Okay.
Just thank you for this opportunity, and I'm excited to sit with everyone else on the board and see the work that you guys have been doing and continue to help with that.
Same. And I'm excited to get to work with Latasha again, so that'll be good. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Appointment of Jeffrey S. Rose to the Joint Operating Committee of the Crawford County Career and Technical Center resolved to the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Jeffrey S. Rose to the Joint Operating Committee of the Crawford County Career and Technical Center to serve the remainder of Holly L. Chapman's term, which ends December 2024. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Ron?
Second.
Ed? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. And we have tonight for first reading of the revisions of the following policies. Keep in mind, these are only the first reading. We will not be voting on these until next month. Policy 103, discrimination harassment affecting students. Policy 104, discrimination harassment affecting staff. Policy 222, tobacco and vaping products for pupils. And Policy 323, tobacco and vaping products for employees. And those all are posted on the website and on the agenda tonight. Approval of the addendum to Articles of Agreement for the Crawford County Career and Technical Center resolved to the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the addendum to Articles of Agreement for the Crawford County Career and Technical Center, which is attachment 12. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Jerry? Is there a second?
I second.
Jeff? Discussion of questions? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Approval of the gift and donation of property to the Crawford County Career and Technical Center, whereas the Board of School Directors of the Crawford Central School District previously approved the purchase of real estate located at 2673 Old Ellis Road, which is the Old Ellis Hill Road property, on behalf and for the use of the Crawford County Career and Technical Center, and that purchase has been completed and whereas the estate of Annabelle M. Shear has offered to gift and donate property contiguous and adjacent to the Old Ellis Road property identified as a Crawford County Parcel Identifier Tax Number 3210-020, consisting of 0.45 acre, to and on behalf of the center. And whereas the Joint Operating Committee of the Center recommends the acquisition of the Shear property by gift and donation as authorized by Sections 216 and 1850.1 of the Public School Code. Now therefore, acting in its authority as a participating school board and constituent board of the area career and technical board, the Board of School Directors of the Crawford Central District pursuant to authority of Sections 216 and 1850.1B11 of the Public School Code hereby authorizes and approves and authorizes the acquisition of the Shear property by gift and donation, authorizes the center president and secretary to sign any documents required to complete the acquisition, and authorizes the Joint Operating Committee to accept the deed and fee simple to the Shear property. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Monica? Is there a second?
Second.
Ron? Any questions?
Just want to clarify now, each, all school districts are approving this, and it's the Career Center that's going to actually take title to the property.
Correct, on behalf of the three participating.
Right. So just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Approval of the personnel schedules resolved to the Board of School Directors of the Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, which are all part of Attachment 13. We have approval of Schedule A, approval of Schedule B, approval of Schedule C, Schedule D, approval of Schedule E, approval of Schedule H, and approval of Schedule I. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Tammy?
Second.
Monica? Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. And then voting on approval of Schedule M, transportation subcontract services. Is there a motion for approval of that?
I still move.
Monica?
I'll second.
Jerry? Any question, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstention?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Approval of the, oh, crypto, Tammy?
Aye. Approval of the Meadville Area Middle School ATS I School Plan for 2024-2025. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Meadville Area Middle School ATS I School Plan for 2024-2025. Attachment 14, I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed? Any question, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
Approval of the Meadville Area Senior High School TSI Non-Title I School Plan for 2024-2025. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Meadville Area Senior High School TSI Non-Title I School Plan for 2024-2025. Attachment 15, I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry? Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
Approval of the TSI Title I School Plan? Is that a one or an I? It's a one, okay, sorry. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the TSI Title I School Plan for 2024-2025. Attachment 16, I still move.
Second.
Monica? Any question, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
First reading of Art of Craft I, II, and III Curriculum, grades 10 to 12, district-wide, Attachment 17. Approval of Schools' PLP Cyber Program for the 2024-2025 School Year. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schools' PLP Cyber Program for the 2024-2025 School Year. Attachment 18, I still move.
Is there a second? Ed? Would you want to speak to that, Dr. Golden? Just to inform the public before we vote as to what we're doing on that.
So the Schools' PLP Cyber Program is a vendor that we are using for our charter, or not charter, our cyber school program. Those students are our students in Crawford Central School District. They are residents. If you know of anybody who may be interested, you can reach out to Mr. Wolfarth. He is overseeing the program with our new cyber coordinator, Andy Androstick. So they've worked very hard to get this up and running, hoping lower cost and able to meet some needs of our students as well.
I just want her to address that because, just, I want her to address that because sometimes, parents don't know that we have our own in-house cyber program, and we are spending about $7.6 million to outside cyber and charter schools. And this is an opportunity for parents to take a look at what we do have that is local right here. It's a new vendor, as she said, local vendor, with, I believe, a lot better on-hand assistance to the parent in getting the programs going. I know the diversity of a cyber program is great for a lot of people, but not all kids are built for a cyber program. But please, if you got anybody out there that's interested in doing cyber or in an outside cyber program, give Ken a call and see what we have to offer. That's all I'd say. Any other questions?
Is there an opportunity to do flex, where you could be a portion cyber, portion?
In school, yes.
There is an opportunity for flex?
Yes.
And that's a part of this as well?
You can do, also do, mainly it's secondary. We do, a lot of students will do the Vo-Tec because they're our students, and then half-day. Just some other varying case-by-case basis works.
No further questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
Approval of the Educational Services Agreement with the School at the Wire Memorial. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Educational Services Agreement with the School at the Wire Memorial, Attachment 19. I still move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jerry? Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Building grounds, Mr. Irwin.
Approval of the garage roof replacement at First District Elementary School resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the garage roof replacement at First District Elementary School by the Fuller Building Group at a cost of $21,815, and I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed? Questions, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Food service, Monica?
Approval of the Community Eligibility Provisions Program. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Community Eligibility Provisions Program. I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ron? Questions, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
Approval of the price increase for cafeteria à la carte items. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the price increase in cafeteria à la carte items. Attachment 20. I still move.
A second?
Second.
Ed? Questions, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
Approval of the Fresh Fruit and Vegetables Program for the 24 to 25 School Year. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Fresh Fruit and Vegetables Program for the 24 to 25 School Year for First District Elementary School and Second District Elementary School. I still move.
Jerry? Any question, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Finance, Mr. Rose?
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: the treasures report for June and July, the financial statements for June and July, and the payment of bills for July and August, and I still move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jerry? Question, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the agreement for computer services with Government Software Services, Inc., Attachment 27, and I still move.
I'll second.
Tammy? Question, discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carried. Administration, Dr. Golden?
Just want to welcome everybody back to the start of a new school year. We had a lot of energy this morning. We had our kickoff of our in-service day. Our focus this year, we're looking at high expectations and engagement with our community and our students, staff. I just want to thank everybody that really helped out to get that rolling. We still have two more days to go with our students coming, so parents, please make sure kids are ready to go on the first day. Get some rest, good dinner if you can, and positive attitude so we can get rolling. So I think a lot of people are ready to get back in the grind. And thanks to Officer Mogul, who also helped us out today in our in-service with some training. We appreciate the work that you've done to help us out. Thank you.
Other public board comments?
We got a couple things.
Mr. Irwin?
First off, seeing this fresh fruits and vegetables thing remind me, the Adams Place apartment building in Cochrane, when it was built, the part of the design was for bringing students in and learn how to can and stuff. There's a commercial kitchen in the place, and I don't know if anybody's toured that building or not. But yeah, the idea was for the older generation to be able to teach the younger ones, you know, different aspects of that. So I don't know if anybody's ever even reached out from Adams Place, or, you know, if anybody's even aware of this, but during the construction of it, I mean, my mother, we got her into the building, but, you know, during the construction and finishing up, I was meeting with some of the people and got to tour the building, and it's quite an elaborate thing, and even they had the greenhouse there, again, to plant the products in the springtime and where you could harvest and can them in the fall. So just thought that was a thing, an interesting thing that we may be able to utilize. So, and then the other thing I want to touch on is the biomass. I know we took it off the agenda, but we did, you know, have extensive discussion on it. And after listening to the presentation of Mr. Wilson, when I talked to him on the phone, he seemed way more optimistic than when he did the presentation. He also talked about, gave us a nice chart with the sweet spot where we're kind of either going to make money or save money or not, and we're kind of like into that. And one of the things that, looking over things, if the price of wood chips goes up, and this, I've noticed locally in Tyonesta and Clearup and Warren, sawmills are closing down. They literally, the bottom has fallen out. I don't see that with the current administration, things are going to change, so as Kevin pointed out, what's going to be the availability of the material? You know, is the price of that going to go up? If that is the case, then we get out of that sweet spot. I do believe if, you know, Trump returns to the White House, we're going to see energy independence, and the price of gas is going to drop, and again, we're going to be out of that sweet spot. And the reason I wanted to talk to the engineer, it's just like a car. You could have the best mechanic in the world, and, you know, he still cannot take a pile of steel and rubber and wires and plastic and build a car, create a car out. It takes an engineer. And, you know, even the best mechanic, even though they could do everything from putting air in tires to fixing your engine, whatever, whenever it comes to airing up your tire, they're going to open the driver's door, they're going to look at the post, a little sticker that's up there as to what the tire pressure should be. That's what the engineer designed it to do. That's why I wanted to hear from the engineer. Not hearing optimism in his voice, and then talking, you know, I'm self-employed, we have a bookkeeper, I talked to her, and the same sentiment that Kevin expressed, where's the savings? That plant has operated for over a decade, and if there was savings, that savings should have been being put into an account. Austin has not come to us and say, hey, I found the account where all the savings has gone. But according to like our bookkeeper told me, you know, all the savings should But according to like our bookkeeper told me, you know, all the savings should have been being put into account for this today, basically, when it comes time to pay that bond, and there is no money to do that. Kevin had pointed out last Monday, you know, yeah, where's the savings? We are pretty much the same place we were when it was last financed. So with everything that I weighed into it, I will recommend that we do close the plant down. I just wish we would have got the engineers involved earlier, so we could have made this decision earlier in the year where it could have been more beneficial to the VOTEC or Career Technical Center, you know, but I also do believe that we need to work on a fair agreement where there is some type of a rent that they're paying per square foot for the use of the building, so the other school districts are contributing to that, and so the Crawford Central taxpayers are not on the hook for the building, and the other school districts are getting the benefit. So I don't know the legal aspects of that or anything like that, but that's going to be my suggestion that, you know, we do close the plant down, we do, you know, liquidate, give whatever money we can from it, but it's offered to the VOTEC or the Career Center at a cost per square foot. So I know that's not official, but I just want people to realize that I did do my due diligence on it, and that will be my recommendation going forward.
I just want to clarify one thing. We can't liquidate the building itself due to the way the bond issue is structured. We'll have that bond debt till probably 2036, or I think the earliest was 2026, we could call it, with some penalties, and Mr. Sennett can clarify, but I don't think we want to get into those legalities that we're treading in some really thin waters there. The advice from Bond Council, or not Bond, the Bond rep was to continue paying it, the debt, which the Career Center is paying their 24% for the next 12, 14 years, whatever it is, till 2036. I mean, they're not walking away, we're not being stuck with the whole bill, but we will have that 76% between us and the mark that's still going to be owed. But I just wanted to clarify, you really can't sell it, but there are some options available through the agreement, Mr. Irwin, that we can, we can work out. And I know the Career Center is diligently waiting for some movement by us to see what we can decide, because there's a welding program that is in dire need of more space, and our options are that that building would work great. So next month, when we officially decide, we'll go from there. Any other board comments? If not, is there a motion for, oh, before we adjourn, I have to announce an executive session for personnel immediately after this meeting. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I still move.
Monica? Second. Ed? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose saying? Meeting is adjourned. It's, we'll go by mine. 6:03.